Hoping to.
And uh, it was nice, but you're right, you're living where you need to be.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
I'm learning. I love learning stuff.
Hey, that's what makes us grow, learning something new.
Oh, we're.
How do you feel? How you doing? That's the question.
Yes. We're not wearing a wear. I must have been. I don't wear a stick, but we are anywhere.
On the right side or on the left?
No.
And. I do a little extra at the right way there.
I verified what I told you. It's always your memory. And then uh, yeah, instructions. So let me tell you something.
Okay, okay.
You drew the short straw, you didn't say that's amazing.
I don't know.
Did I need to? Move your head. You smell not the whole of my breath, it's too much. Just kidding.
Now the gig line. Down gig line, my friend.
Get my ass up.
The gig line, salute. My gig line.
The problem, the problem we have. Problem we have is too, there's too many people. There's too many representatives that are loyal to Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. In Philadelphia, you can't. You can't, you can't get, you can't get a straight result on any, any election without. This corruption today isn't. So, same way with, same way with uh, same way with Pittsburgh. Allegheny County.
So he has, he has an open restroom, you know, with a hatchet, just enough knocking out.
What's a horrible.
Like Lee Spring, a place around French Creek. No, I don't think you need to do them next time. I think it's just that it can possibly send us over.
You know, this is right.
Another little, I'm going to send you that right now.
Yeah, I believe in.
Two weeks ago, I had to write six thousand.
I had a chance to get on the.
For school tax.
And I said to him, six thousand. His home has, he's got some. One more issue he's solving. Uh, and he was waiting for the shirt.
I found a final part.
Thanks for having me.
I assume.
You want to see.
I'm sure they have. A thousand dollars for kids, what they put into schooling. And you'll see. Parent.
We went out for the. We read some of the little county years. We covered all. And charges. Uh, that they. We should, we should collect.
They're pretty dumb. Return pieces, what, gets out faster than you can shake a stick.
My, my assistant has been helping me.
Right, we talk.
And, and Sherwin with uh, calculating and recalculating. And then you calculate.
So you know what happens.
The system's. He uh, he's a member down there.
So redo it.
Yes. And notice it's like, you know, once we actually.
They're up, it's the smart move. So you see, you had that on the. Yeah. It just was automatic.
Right, it's been quite a twenty five. I'm glad you're joining next year.
What did everybody does? So, but I never, she were home.
They want to go and, and the school.
They're for like.
They said they're paying off, they're going. They haven't got.
They keep the course active.
It pushes up.
They hire a lot of workers.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, so my son worked there. Yeah. Yeah, he wrote his grounds curriculum, he was at. Own dreams. You know, roads and fairways and all that. Yeah, I would like to. All my children. No place to go. No place to go.
Oh, okay.
The guys are. They will be protected against the. Right. Yes.
Cause it's very. You were around. That was your.
There's fireworks. Yeah, but your kids wouldn't have it. This is what I mean. Get all together.
So I just. The biggest, the biggest problem with the town. Robinson four, where you vote. Is twelve hundred registered voters. How many voted? Four hundred. Thirty percent.
They might have.
The whole mail in ballot deal.
It's all like. And.
I have no. Ordinarily idea.
Okay.
Sure, there's probably under, they're under somebody's tail.
I don't.
He's, he's breaking.
I'm still not at.
I know. Joe mentioned that he's not running reelection back with that. In West Virginia, he is, he had about thirty percent approval rating in West Virginia. Not in West Virginia, he better move somewhere when he gets. Cause he's got those, he's got his popular.
Small.
Highlights.
Yep.
He's.
Right. But I think we just wait for the twenty twenty. So how do you.
Yeah, he's trying to go for a. He said, he said today, he's gonna travel. Be happy to see you. Yeah. And it is.
Does the snake.
I just hope we're effective. I called maybe since we were uh, changing. In a couple of days over twenty twenty three, they'll see why they took me out. That short term. Six fifty.
It would have been.
He did. Well, we're. Three percent. Yeah, two. You would approve. They.
We have to stop. Having, having the, having the homeland security. Mayorkas. Mayorkas, he's another group.
Donna.
Yeah, I'm. Some left hands, okay.
I know. My tour. Yeah, we can play work. I'm a legend. But it worked.
She doesn't come this. So you two. Remember meeting of the Robinson Township's board supervisors will come to order with the flag salute and a moment of silence for our troops wherever they may be. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, on the ground, indivisible. With liberties and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, I guess we have roll call next. Mr. Steve, here. Mr. Bevler.
Here.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
And I'm here. Citizens concerned. Anybody out there? Nothing, that's unusual, going once, going twice. Correspondence. Looks like we've got. Correspondence from the local municipality involvement process meeting. And also. An acknowledgement form from the county repository bid acknowledgement. Where everybody's information that doesn't know that that map pool means. There's a property that's being sold in Robinson Township for. Lack of back taxes being paid. The township has the opportunity to look at it because it's probably being sold. For under what the current assessed value may have been on the property. And we have the opportunity to say or do something about that. So if any member of the board wishes to express any opinion on that. Could let it go to the county. Okay, I just will let that pass. I'll wait. It'll be sold without respect. Do we need to make a motion to have the. Vice chair in this case, uh, sign the paperwork?
If there's something to sign, yes, you should authorize him.
That I believe Chris may have signed last month, we want to check that before we.
Okay.
Because when this came to me this afternoon.
Okay.
So I, just to clarify that, so.
It could have been, I don't know, it's on the agenda, I just run over it.
Correct, yes, so I'm trying to double check that.
All right.
He may have rejected it at that time, it seems to be.
We want to make a precautionary mo- motion anyway.
We could do it the twentieth.
All right.
We could do it the twentieth.
Okay.
All right, we need it.
Okay.
Good enough.
Dennis, you're on.
Police.
Hey, boy. Under my agenda, the first item is to discuss the alarm system. Uh, we briefly discussed this during one of the budget meetings. And uh, far speaking for the police department. One of the proposals for the alarm system at the PD year was one thousand three hundred ninety seven dollars. There is a four hundred eighty dollar monitoring for the year. And then, in addition to that proposal, there is also what they call levered door locks, which the alarm company recommended for two of our doors. Which would give the officers access in and out, and also disarms the alarm and rearms it automatically. And then, the other thing that we were looking at is our video system. And the DDR upgrade was two thousand one hundred ninety seven dollars. So, all these numbers I'm giving you are through ATS. They were, we received two bids, and they were the best, they are also Co-Stars. So they fall under the Co-Stars agreement. The total of those two items is four thousand six hundred sixty eight dollars. Okay, so we were talking and discussing briefly about putting it in the budget for next year. I did some analyzation of my current budget for this year. And we do have the money in the budget to cover it this year if the board so chooses. So specifically, if you recall, under my capital purchases, mine was four ten eight oh one. I have one thousand four hundred thirty seven, which was actually allotted for the alarm system. As we discussed, upgrading our alarm system, uh, part of a twenty twenty two budget talks for twenty twenty three.
Just got text from Chris, he wants to join via telephone.
Hello?
All right, we're here. All right, there you go.
In addition, there are several other line items where we have money, so what my recommendation to the board. Will be on Tuesday at the uh, the regular meeting. I'm going to be requesting a motion to approve moving forward with this purchase and also upgrades. Of our security system at the PD. I just wanted the board to know that money is in our current budget, so rather than pushing it off for next year and budgeting for next year. You know, be my recommendation, I will take care of it this year.
Gentlemen, comments? Where would I take action?
Only comment is, is, jump back down to the bill, same before.
Correct. Yeah, we need to get the bill in, so it's actually covered for this year, not under next year, understood. Okay, so I'll bring that up then, and then, I wanted to, B, I wanted to discuss purchasing, purchasing an EZ Pass transponder. Which would be for both the township and a police use. Uh, this year, we got hit pretty hard with tolls, we do not have an EZ Pass currently. And uh, had officers, uh, travel the turnpike, the train. Uh, one officer traveled it, I didn't realize he was traveling it, so we got hit pretty good with the toll by plates. After that incident, I told them when their travel the turnpike, let me know, and I gave them my personal EZ Pass transponder. And uh, so it, it would be significantly reduced fees for while they travel the turnpike. So I spoke with the general manager about this, and uh, he also thought it was a good idea, he researched some of the pricing, so I'll take that over to him.
Okay, so, for us to have one transponder is thirty five dollars for the year. Uh, speaking of that one course and that one course alone, there'd have been a forty five dollar savings over plate tolls versus the EZ Pass. So you'd have made it up in that one week of travel alone. There's a three dollar, uh, renewal fee annually, uh, which means that essentially, in the following years, as long as that transponder remains in effect. You're going to have a, really, you'll recoup those costs probably in one trip and back down to Downingtown, so. I think it's very, for us, I think it's a smart move. Again, we, we travel that enough, I know we also do parks runs to Harrisburg, so there are some other things that we can utilize that for, and again, I think that's going to be a huge cost savings force.
Are you looking at one or two transponders, cause you mentioned the road crew also?
I, I think we'll be fine with one transponder to start, if we find there's going to be too much of a conflict, we can go to a second transponder. Uh, we can keep it in the township officer down here at the police department, won't matter either way. Uh, again, they can just sign that out as they need that for.
Yeah, once in a while pays to be able to buy the turnpike, there's a lot of schools that are in the mid. Harrisburg area, let's put it that way, direction anyhow.
That's what we did, and we've had multiple schools of Hershey, we've had, uh, multiple of Buck County.
Yeah.
So that's where our guys can do the last.
I think it's a good idea.
Just wanted to also bring up, uh, some recent repairs. Um, we had a, actually two tire repairs, one, we took the excellence old load down in Berthford, this happened actually at the beginning part of uh, this month, and uh. They repaired that and they charged the township, it was just a valve stem replacement. And then, uh, we had a flat tire on the Durango. Um, when I was utilizing it, I responded to a call, assist our guys. And uh, when the call was clear, I realized I had flat tire, picked up a screw or nail on the way. Creative Customs came out, towed me to their shop and fixed the tire, and he refused to give us an invoice. So, I just wanted to bring that up to the supervisor, so you're aware of those. Railway signs, as you know, we're working on the solicitation signs, as well as the uh, J break and entry card signs. They had been ordered, we're discussing that with Harry. So more than discussion, I just more of an update, if you would, just wanted to update the board on that. And also, at the meeting, there's going to be a resolution for uh, the destruction of police records. This is per um, law, and actually, we have a buffer, pretty good buffer in there as well. You may or may not be aware, the records, uh, have never been destroyed here. So I have eighty boxes. They go back to nineteen seventy eight. So uh.
Surprise they don't go back further.
Yeah, we take them up to about two thousand. Uh, that's where we go, and uh, it needs to be done, we need to clear up some space, and uh. I've been working with Supervisor Steve with that, and he has the resolution drafted.
Just as a curiosity, do you have to record them digitally? And maintain a record that way?
We will, we do have to document, and uh, we're looking into different services right now to get a price. Um, but what's nice is, is due to the volume that we have, they will come here, and they have video, so we will be placing it straight in, we can watch it shred. And then we will document that as well. But uh, I was pretty shocked, I, I estimated, I think fifty, and I was, when I sat down, went through, I think it was, it was eighty boxes. And moving forward, you know, since I took over, I'm pretty much running a paperless system for the most part, so everything is digital. Now, so, and that's helpless, that helpless of space, make uh, and save streets.
Something that's way overdue.
I agree. And then, uh, as you're aware, we've been working on setting up some improvements in the office. I had reached out to Penske and requested if they had any furniture that they weren't using, and requested a, a price. On what they would sell that furniture to. They've been very generous, and they actually had their, they have a subcontractor who's a professional furniture installer. They reached out to them, cause he actually has some control over their warehouses. And uh, they did a site visit, they're going to actually be doing another one. But uh, they're going to donate the furniture and also new chairs here for the meeting room, and uh, for the cost of one dollar.
I'll be collecting at the end of the meeting.
So uh, they have, they, they drafted a, a bill of sale, and then once we know the delivery date, we can fill that in. But obviously, I just want the board to be aware of that. I have spoke with the uh, the furniture installer. And uh, they are, most of the furniture is in the Allentown area. And uh, they're looking at doing it over two to three days to make it convenient for us, since obviously, we're operating while this takes place. And uh, the price that they are willing to do it for us for is four hundred forty nine dollars. And that includes the delivery and the setup. So I think that's pretty reasonable. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. And that is all I have, I think I spoke enough. Unless anyone has any questions in there.
Before we move on, the ordinance as it relates to the solicitation. Have we adopted that to your knowledge?
Into ordinance, no.
Can we, is that something you've put some input in, is that ready to be done?
Yeah, isn't that included in, where, no, that is not included in any ordinance that you got drafted, right?
It's, it's done.
Yeah.
But uh, I don't know why I thought that was completed, but.
It might be, and I just might not have a, I, I, I'll, I'll look at that. Cause I, I thought it was done, but.
I did as well, but that was several months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll look at that, let you do it, Tim.
Thank you.
Anything else for Dennis? Now we move on, finance.
All right, so, we have monthly expenses are included in your packet for review, as is the transfer report, sort agent report, annual budget, and the meeting schedule for review as well.
Uh, is this where we want to talk about the budget, or are we going to do that later?
We can.
Cause I think that we have, I believe we have to vote tonight to advertise.
Exactly, I had said if we waited until um, through Tuesdays from now would be December, when I say twenty seventh, or whatever it figured out to be.
Yeah, we'd have to respect the meeting. So, do we want to take time now, take the, the budget? And uh, decide whether we want to send it forward or not?
Yeah, that sounds good to me, cause we only had the, the roads in with an extra question about the roads.
The extra question about the roads had to do with me expressing an indication of a desire that we accelerate the road repair. I think my colleagues on the board and I perhaps are not in agreement as it relates to the necessity for tax increases. I, I oppose the, what I perceive as the waste that we've done, and I think frankly, could continue to do. So, that's my opposition to the budget as drafted.
So uh, part, and I, it doesn't reflect this, but part of the plan is to, and I'm probably getting a little bit ahead of myself here, but. Part of the plan is to uh, increase the uh, funds available to the road crew by, I think it's a hundred and ninety grand. All of which have come out of savings. And with that, to be able to do additional roadwork. Uh, there's a caveat to that, and that is, um, which I have here for everybody to look at. We've been uh, asked to join an intermunicipal agreement between Brecknock Union and ourselves. Uh, in a grant to purchase a roller and a paver. So if the grant comes through, nobody's sure exactly whether it is full grant, partial grant, matching funds grant, you know, nobody knows. Uh, regardless of whether we get the grant or not, they're, they're going to need it, cause the paver we have now is not doing well. So uh, by uh, putting a hundred and ninety aside, if we end up giving our fair share of the paver, would be a hundred, a little less than a hundred thousand. So, which would give them uh, roughly ninety thousand dollars to put on additional, put on the roads. Now, in addition to that, we've also talked about consolidating our bids between those three municipalities for roadwork. In an effort to try and get a better price on per square mile of roadway. Uh, we're thinking, our thoughts are, that that would drop the price per square mile. And would give us an opportunity to put down uh, extra material on more roads. Uh, we won't know how that works out until we actually get bids, but I believe Ryan is working on the A. Uh, A bid and a B. And if the uh, B, if the uh, bids come in lower, we'll do the B as well as the A. So uh, those are what we have going on there, as far as the roads go. Did I get that right?
I know, very respectfully to Mr. Steve, I, I don't really favor withdrawing from savings, I would rather stop the waste. And the way I see it, that's just not, you know, the way to go. We neglected the roads far too long, and as it relates to the intermunicipal agreement. I, I, I hope, and I'm not sure Harold, if you were on the board at the time, that was a boom dog, to figure out what equipment's owned by who, what's used, and that hasn't worked. To, to the degree that I feel it should. I've expressed that opinion months ago, and, you know, we don't even have copies of those agreements, the files were in total chaos. Have you seen any of those?
Your, your resolutions in the book?
No, I'm talking about who owns what, you've looked at some of them?
I've seen the intermunicipal agreement, but I've not seen who owns the books or.
Well, Harold, I think maybe if you want to spend some time, we can look at those again, they were a total mess, I'm not talking about an actual resolution. You can resolve to do something jointly, and has nothing to do with who owns what necessarily, sometimes they'll have that. It, it hasn't worked, folks.
I, I see the paver as working fine, I mean, we, we've gotten a tremendous amount of work out of it, and there's times where we come out on the high side of that uh, that agreement. You know, sometimes uh, we get more work out of the group than, than our neighboring municipalities, and some years, I guess it's different, they get a little bit more out of us. But I think that it's a, I think it's so far, it's been a fair system.
And I disagree.
Okay.
Gentlemen, if I may, I would say that at least supporting the grant is uh, in a positive in our favor, if they're rewarding the entire grant. Uh, it's approximately three hundred and some thousand dollars, I'm spending eighty thousand hours. Uh, and that equipment would come to Brecknock, uh, as there's ones that are actually applying for the grant, but we would still have a sharing agreement with them in that equipment. So I think that's uh, I think that's good for our, our business on our end. Uh, if the cost comes in, where we don't receive everything in the grant, we can always revisit that time, how we would like to proceed. Uh, with any kind of sharing agreement with that particular equipment.
You can certainly see the benefits in the current paper that we're using provided the township, just by keeping your eyes open. And a lot of work done with that duty area, and I understand that part of the problem with that paper now is due to the fact. That the replacement tracks that were purchased for it last year were the cheapest thing you could buy, and we have to be paid for. My understanding is also, did I get that right, Barry?
Yes, sir. And if I may, um, it's actually in iWorks, which I can dig it up. We were at Brecknock Township this year, total of fourteen working days, Brecknock was over at Robinson, a total of twenty seven working days. Which is all in iWorks.
So. That's not time, which is more favorable certainly.
And, as Harold stated, there's times where, you know, some summers were over there a little more, and vice versa. little more and vice versa, but...
I know we talked about bidding roadwork like that before and I don't know why it never happened, I know we...
Well, I...
Subject come up and we're generally in defense.
So we had to figure out whether we wanted, I, I contacted Brecknock and Union and I haven't heard back from Brecknock yet, but Union doesn't care who takes the lead on it, whether we take the lead on it, Brecknock takes it, nobody, they don't care. So we're trying to find out from Brecknock whether they care or not. If they don't care, they just need to get us their data so we can advertise and then we'll split the advertising three ways. If the board's any agreement over that, yeah?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Do we need a motion on that, Tim?
Yes, you do.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we agree with Union and Brecknock to do intermunicipal bidding on roadwork.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have it, do we make a second motion? Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
I'm moving on.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mr. Smith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, we got a four to one vote.
Do you have the budget?
Yeah, yeah, I know that. But while we're on that topic, we have a letter of support for the grant with Brecknock. Do we wanna make a mo, do we need a motion to send the, the letter of support for the grant?
No, you've just authorized the participation.
Okay, and we can just sign that on the dot.
So we're still on the budget?
We're on the budget. There's no changes on the first page.
I think the changes on the second page were a little bit greater. Same as on the third page, I wish, like that was a little bit created stuff as well.
Right, that is not changed since the last one. The only thing she's added in on the fourth page is the $4,000 opt-out online.
What was that again, Rich?
She, what, what was added in there was on the assistant manager line, they did the $4,000 opt-out, so the medical insurance opt-out, so I'm trying to cover my track.
405315, yeah.
Right.
And with 409500, I've contacted a couple of guys about repairing and driving. Had one guy actually looked at it and he's not interested in the job, it's too small for him and so he passed on it, but I do have a couple of calls and some other guys.
Timothy, you said we have wasted the budget, would you, do you have any indication specifically where do you think?
When you say waste, Mr. Brown, what I'm referring to is, is a board making decisions over the year, whether it be giving out ARPA funds that we now need, whether it be engaging, hiring solicitors, no offense, Mr. Orlando, without the full authority of the board, I'm not referring to you specifically in this instance, having township employees just contact willy-nilly without the authority, it cranks up the expenses unnecessarily in my opinion. Firing employees, not hiring employees properly. Where should I, tell me when you want me to stop, Mr. Brown? So if you're saying, I, I feel like the board said that we, we've done a budget like we've done the last decade at, at the minutes, look at, folks, look at the minutes of those meetings on the budget. I've raised issues with the fire companies. We give the fire companies money, there's, seems to be all kinds of issues that we kinda continue at this board wanting to put under the rug and I'd rather have that discussion out in the open.
What are some examples?
With the fire companies?
No, with everything that we just brought up.
Firing an employee, no one would second my motion. Well, the last instance, we've, we've contacted the solicitor which will discuss some of those legal things in executive session. I'm not a big fan of the executive sessions where you folks don't know what's going on. But I have a question as to specifically how we've hired outside counsel on an issue that we don't even know. I, if you talk about the fire companies, I asked a question, one of our biggest insurance is on a ladder truck. I'm not a firefighter, I've been to probably in the last several months, six or eight different parks. Now, do you prefer Geiger Town or Friendship, Jeff?
Geiger Town.
Geiger Town, they have a, they have a ladder truck. Maybe they think it's used, maybe they think it's not used, I'm not sure, but I asked insurance questions and I kinda get, I kinda get the wrong. Now, over the last decade, we've spent on the fire companies, what, a million dollars? And they're, and they're struggling. Now, I'd ask my colleagues, when we talk about executive sessions, I'd ask my colleagues, they are not fully, fully independent of this board, we have an obligation to fund them. There's been no discussions of that at all, no. And what our chairman's referencing is that now we feeling like we're jammed into adopting the budget that I, I don't, I don't see it as helpful.
Well, if I recall, we had a meeting with the fire companies and we pretty much told them that we had certain expectations and they didn't meet them.
Well, what are those expectations and did they? Chipperolder just didn't respond to...
They didn't, they didn't.
They didn't respond. And I see in the chief's report that they were responding to, was that a wedding? What, what were they at, in fire pyrotechnics? More on that subject later. So now it's time to get the issues started to be discussed and, and the budget to just do what we've always done. Now, we had some difficult or some extra, I'll say, extra difficulty as it relates to the budget due to some personnel changes and things like that. But we were, we were eight, nine drafts along on the budget and I don't feel that we've had the discussions or taken the time that we've really needed to do. So that's my opposition.
Proceed as you see fit.
Okay, so we, you can't budget for whether you're gonna terminate an employee and how that's gonna work out?
You can budget by not making foolish decisions. I don't see that this board handing out raises without any out raises, without any, without any job reviews for years. We're not, we're not talking six months, folks. Issuing bonuses, issuing raises, we don't wanna confront the reality of what the problems are in the township. You just wanna approve last year's budget assuming increases. I don't assume increases when I ask someone, I say, is there any way we can do better? We didn't even ask that question of our supplier. We didn't even know that one supplier had no inflation clause in there. That's my opposition. Part of it.
Any suggestions?
Well, it was news to me for our, our manager has, seems like he's on a lay of schedule to start doing some interviews and I'll be real, doing some job reviews, I'll be real interested in how that, that plays out. So that's one solution. I, I don't know how, unless you're gonna take a serious look at that as opposed to just rubber stamping stuff, I mean, how do you do that? You, you called a special meeting, Harold, you were involved in the special meeting to terminate that employee and it cost us 125,000, folks. And then we spent time goofing around, hiring other people.
What, what's getting that?
That's yesterday, I get it, yesterday's newspaper.
Nothing to do with this budget?
Right, it has everything to do, that's money out of our budget, has everything to do with it.
Oh, it was money out of last year's budget, any of your...
Okay, money out of your pocket, folks. Money out of your pocket. Why, why do you send, why do you send multiple guys, whether it's a road crew or whether someone, why do you send multiple guys on each other? Right now, there is no real supervision of that road crew, I mean, supervision supervision. Do we have in the budgets, what are we thinking for our public works, correct? What's in here?
Right in there.
All right, what is it?
You asked the number.
Well, and it's in there.
It's in there.
Okay, and in executive session, we, we, we have not filled a position. We've done some interviews, et cetera, and that's gonna be one personnel and legal matters, it's gonna be one discussion that I'm more than appropriate in that. Chris, are you still with us?
Oh, I am, I'm listening.
Alright, good, good, because when we go into executive session, I have an update on that issue.
Okay, so... You're speaking part of what I was saying. I'm, I'm in something else. Yeah, yeah, that was on page eight. Those are the only changes.
That was a change, or it was? To the amount you talked about last time, definitely looks to me. Quite it?
I believe it's there.
It did not look correct?
I believe it's what was discussed.
That's alright, well, thank you.
I'll make a motion to advertise the budget.
Okay, I have a motion to advertise the budget, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Duly made and seconded motion, advertise the budget by roll call vote. Harold?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
I'll vote yes. And Mr. Smith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eight, four yeses, I don't know. Okay, let me find my agenda. It looks like monthly expenses, treasurer's report, sewer report, sewer agent report, 24, the budget's done, 24 meeting scheduled will all be reviewed at home. Fire companies, I see no one here tonight from either Chipperolder or Geiger Town unless you have something, Jeff?
No, the reports were sent in.
Okay.
Were emailed in, so...
Okay, thank you. Move on to August minutes and expense reports. I think we have some minutes. Anybody wanna make any comments or changes or corrections, Tim?
I'll make a comment that the minutes are not reflecting, you know, what's happening. Look, look at the minutes of the... What your budget means. They, they've gotten so pared down that you can't see what's going on here anymore.
They reflect the business. They, they reflect avoid...
They reflect avoid, Harold.
Avoid of whatever.
There's not, there's not, there's no discussion, but I make a discussion and it's, it's just, it's not even placed in here.
But there's been a separate way for that.
When there's a discussion and you hear, you hear a complaint and then a supervisor responds to that complaint, that's, you, you would think that there can be, I'm not talking about a dissertation, I'm talking about a bare bones, this is, these are nothing, Harold. I don't know if you did them, I don't know if you did them, no, I don't wanna do it, I want someone to do it right, that's what I want. Talk about that more next.
What do you wanna add or change? That's, that's what I meant.
I like to have them beefed up, I'm not gonna sit here and go verbatim over each item. I, I expressed in, I expressed a problem as it relates to the budget before and it's as though it doesn't exist, it's as though it doesn't exist, Harold.
Every, every time I do minutes, I, I mail them out to everyone. You will need changes, corrections, ready? And I can tell you right now, I get messages back, I got several back from Jeff because I keep spelling his name wrong. But, you know, but anybody can feel free to, you'll make whatever...
That's not the purpose of the minutes.
Well, if they're not right, we need to provide information to make them right.
I didn't say they weren't necessary.
Beef them, can you beef them up? Can you add anything to that? I could s...
Can you try?
I could sit and write paragraphs if you want, but I wanna participate in these meetings as well.
Say that again?
I said I'd like to participate in these meetings as well.
Harold, I don't know in the history of Robinson Township that any supervisor in the last 60 days has participated more than you. I don't know of anybody, Harold, you have broken the record.
Okay, will we do the, the minutes? Anybody has any corrections, additions or changes? Please contact, Harold. Is that fair? Alright, looks like we have reports to look at also. Consider those for Tuesday night's meeting and we'll move on to item eight, planning and engineering. Ryan, you're up.
Okay, good evening, board, I had circulated my report last week. First item for discussion here tonight, there was a handful of questions that came out of our first discussion regarding the engineering proposals for Rock Hill Bridge. I had circulated for clarification to each one of the three bidders or engineering firms that provided proposals. The first question went to Whitman Engineering Consultants and that was with respect to their proposed structure.
Right.
Bill did clarify that he is proposing a concrete deck steel, steel beam bridge and that the reference to the pre-engineered structure was in error. I did forward that email to the board for your reference.
And if I may, I remember reading a comment, it was that Earl said he could possibly have things galvanized to cut down on the maintenance, which is a giant issue as far as I am concerned, and he's the only one I think that made that comment. I don't know if it can be applied to the other bids or not.
I, I believe it likely could. I will also say that Bill's proposal from the construction side was the only one that I believe adequately took into effect, something that was requested in the RFP and that was the paving of the approaches to this bridge. Remember, if you, if you will, it's discussed in the inspection reports that the concrete deck is not thick enough as it currently is. So we are going to have a paving transition that's going to need to be addressed on either approach.
How much do you think it might be this roadway?
Bill has 130,000 and change.
What, 16 inches or something?
I don't think it's gonna be that much, I think it's gonna be closer to 4.
Okay, that's what she's looking at, I, I knew it would be a bump, but I didn't know how much.
Yeah, yeah. So those were the clarifications that Mr. Whitman provided with respect to the R2 proposal. What we had honed in on with, with respect to that was the $38,000 and change that they had in construction phase services. They provided a clarification... They provided a clarification, uh, which I did forward with respect to how they arrived at that number. And they also offered to provide those services on a timely material basis if we elected to do that. My take on what they provided was either way, they're going to be pulling their thirty-eight thousand dollars and change out of their contract. Okay? Um, that number for construction face services is higher in their proposal significantly than either of the other proposals that we received. Larson Design Group, uh, their proposal was to reuse the interior beams. They justified why they proposed to do that. They believe there is going to be a cost savings and they believe they're salvageable. Uh, they also said that if the board were elected to, they would propose or they could provide a design with a little impact to their engineering fees. To use new interior beams as well. Um, what I highlighted in my report for you is, you know, at this point, what we are looking at are essentially engineering proposals to design and permit this structure. And then construction cost estimates based upon those proposals. Whitman Engineering is significantly lower than the other two bids. There are forty-two thousand nine hundred and forty for the engineering and permitting and bidding. Uh, R2 is at a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars even for those same services. And Larson Design Group, uh, is at eighty-six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Um, they believe that that price, uh, would essentially remain the same whether they reuse the interior beams or not. STV again did not provide proposal. Uh, so essentially that's what we're looking at here is, is we have the, um, engineering proposals with construction estimates to come up.
Yeah, but, uh. Whitman was the highest in construction estimate.
He was, but if you look at his number, he's the only one that included that one hundred and thirty thousand and change to address the approaches.
Approaches.
The other two proposals was denying if he had.
Took that out, then he's probably.
One question for you, and this may sound ridiculous, if it is, I apologize. But I have seen big improvements with galvanized pipes where they were used under the roads. If they were sp- as coated galvanized, in other words, pipe was galvanized and it was dipped in some kind of coating. I do not know if that's an epoxy compound or some type of, some other resin or something that's put on there. But I know the pipes last two, three times longer. My question is, is there some kind of compound like that could be put over galvanized structural steel on these bridges? To cut down future maintenance?
Well, that's what Bill had recommended in his response to our, our question. So it does appear as though, you know, that is not.
But, but he has included the new figures.
Well, he had galvanizing. I know that.
He had galvanizing in, a- and again, that would, you, you could bid it with or without. You, you know what I mean? At some point, once you get to the engineering design, what you bid is.
Right, right. You would have been for it.
Correct.
But I, I, I just wanted to get your feel and your input on whether, what's your feeling? Is it coating over galvanizing and coating combined?
Yes, and you know, we could discuss that with whoever we select, but I, I certainly think that that would, you know, be, be a positive addition to whatever we do.
I know it's tough getting bridges painted.
It is. And, and even the permitting is getting tougher and tougher.
Yes.
You know, so.
You forget about getting it done, which is what happened to this bridge. It was supposed to be done, supposed to be done, and never happened. And talk about waste, there is one.
So at this point, you know, that's where we're at. I forward the, the board. I don't know if anybody had any questions, if this was something you wanted to run additional discussion or advance on this evening?
Take, uh.
Take it to Tuesday.
Make a decision right tonight? You want to wait till Tuesday?
Tuesday. Don't get me.
There's no advantage to tonight. You've got the daily option, that's all. I was looking at.
Okay. If anybody has any questions regarding what's been circulated on this, uh, let me know and I can get clarification before the, the program.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, going, moving on with respect to the street work, uh, I have met with Barry and we did provide those estimates as well in this, uh, our previous engineer report and this one. Um, we've also gone ahead and narrowed those down to the roads that we believe, uh, would nicely fit at least the previous budget. It sounds like we're looking to increase that slightly. Um, and if we proceed as it sounds with the intermunicipal agreement, I think we're loaded and ready to go. We can coordinate those numbers with, in whatever form or fashion is, is necessary.
Did you have the, the, uh, Plan B, uh, roads designated yet or?
We don't. So to fit the original budget that we had, our solution to that was to bid golf course road, which was scheduled for a double application of oil and chip and phases. Um, that's the way our draft spec is prepared, and that was how we were going to buffer the budget.
Okay.
Depending what that number raises to, Harold, we can take a look at, you know, adding.
Yeah, that, that'll be depending upon, uh, how much the bid is.
Right.
When we get it, so that we, but we're going to have to specify in there somewhere how much we want done.
And, and what we'd be looking at there is a square yardage, and it sounds like our base bid would be that golf course road number. You know, hoping, hoping that getting out early and increasing our square yardage would drive that unit price down. And then I can get with Barry on, uh, whatever, uh, one of these additional Calico Plow or Oakbrook Court. Um, Oakbrook Court, you know, certainly a small one that we could squeeze in there as, as a B and then look at whichever one of the others fits well.
Yeah, and we just, we just did that this year, so it'd be good to get under seal.
There was some discussion, uh, as we were developing these with respect to plow and the section coming down from the church. Um, and wanting to pay attention to, uh, what we hope will be a success on our micro surface on White Bear, if that would make sense to apply there as well.
Okay, so. Your, your plan A is to, we, we have almost five miles of golf course, we ranked?
Yep.
And, uh, that, it will take us from where to where?
That will take you from.
Ten to Over Row.
Correct.
That's the whole way.
That's the whole way. And, and in what we had prepared under the original budget, we had proposed to bid that in. Phases.
Okay. That's fine.
So, so, you know, we could add if needed.
Okay.
So yes, that was, that was proposal F. And again, that's what we would be looking at would be these square yardages and, and we can coordinate that with whoever. You know, we have, we have the numbers. It's a matter of what we put in. Okay? Um, under C, we had some discussion with the planning commission, and I believe we have somebody here to discuss with you this evening. Seven Form Stone Road, uh, the property owner is here. He made a presentation to the planning commission on Monday night. Regarding a accessory building, a commercial accessory building on his property which burned down several years ago. Um, he applied for a permit to construct a replacement structure and was advised that land development approval would be required. Um, the presentation was made to the planning commission requesting a waiver from the land development process. To construct a, uh, similar sized building with a small addition for RV storage. Um, and the planning commission made a recommendation to the board of supervisors to grant that waiver conditioned upon a full zoning review as part of the building permit process. Property owner is here. Would you like to address the board, uh, in similar discussion?
Not much to really say except, uh.
Sir, can we get your name, please?
Yes, Michael Degler.
How are you made?
I'm his son.
Okay. Right? All right, then.
Okay. There was a building that was constructed, uh, back in the nineties, like I had done. And unfortunately had burned down last September. That there would be a picture of the building as it was. And the request was that I had a little bit, I purchased, my wife and I purchased an RV. And as we're reconstructing the building, we'd been like to make a little wider so we can put the RV under.
You have, as I've been into this building, when, not long after it was first built.
Oh, wow.
There's plenty of room on either side.
Yes.
I mean, this is, this is a, I mean, in my opinion, a no brainer. I'd really just like to make a motion, a little concerned with that extra zoning review, but I'd make a motion that. We proceed in this matter.
I'll say your motion.
Okay. Grant the waiver.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that very much, gentlemen.
That was Tim?
You done right, Harold?
And Jeff?
We cooperate, don't we? You're done right.
Go ahead.
Okay. We were duly made and seconded motion to approve the waiver for Mike Degler on Seven Form Stone Road. You, Harold, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Can you hear me, Chris?
I can. I vote.
Couldn't hear how you voted. Go ahead.
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Glad you're not, Mr. Bay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Feel free to give me a call. We can talk about next.
Well, well.
Will, do you want to say? The final item on, under my agenda, uh, three eighty-four Over Row Road, the, uh, property owner did not appear before your planning commission on Monday evening, and therefore I have nothing to present.
Who was the way you had for three eighty-four?
For three eighty-four, for in addition to a commercial structure there as well. Okay. That was originally discussed two months, three months ago with planning commission, and they requested more information.
Anything else for? Mine, planning engineering? Nothing else? Move on to Jane. Legal matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there's nothing listed on my agenda. If the board has any questions, I'll try to give the best answer. We are on track to adopt the short-term rental ordinances on, uh, our original meeting on the hundred and twenty-first. And, uh. Got a lot to say. Was, uh, if you've got any questions?
Quick question. Should we discuss the seventy-three Weaver Road that we discussed with Ted earlier today? That'd be a good place to do that here, sir.
Uh, that would be, yes. Uh, our manager and our code, um, enforcement officer. Received a building permit request, I believe, to construct. A building prior to the demolition of an existing building.
Correct.
And was told that's not, it's not, um. Couldn't be done without, um, approval under our current ordinance. Uh, it sounded to me, and Rich mentioned it, like the Amadeo situation. Um, and so what I suggested was that the landowner be advised to appear before the supervisors. Tell the board what he would like to do to see whether or not the board wished to authorize. The preparation of a, an agreement that would allow the owner to do what he was requesting. So, uh, I don't know if you were able to reach him.
We did, sir. Uh, we did reach him. Dave, he is available to come before the board on the twenty-first.
So, uh, um, if the board is so inclined, the landlord will be here on the twenty-first. And he'll tell you what he wants to do, and then the board can decide whether you want to, uh, entertain a, a similar arrangement. As you did with, uh, the Amadeo first.
Sounds good, Dave.
Anything else for the solicitor? Jane, have you had a chance to review an item on your new business nuisance ordinance review? You have a chance to look at this?
No.
Excuse me?
No.
Whoever puts in the agenda, an item for discussion. This is clear something that the solicitor should be in a position to comment on tonight, and he's not.
Well, that's because.
I mean, I am intending to comment on that, but. That, that's because at our last meeting, you all elected not to move it forward. We can't send it to the solicitor unless we say we can.
Well, we don't seem to have any problem contacting the solicitor on numerous other things, so at least of general reading of this, he could give us some ideas. I'm concerned for its constitutionality. This isn't even close, Harold.
If, if we vote one forward to the solicitor tonight, that's, that's what will happen. We, you know.
We, we nearly saw the solicitor on stuff, Harold, is what my point was before, and now on something that, out of the bottle, within a month, based on two complaints, folks.
No, it's not more than.
Yeah.
Well, there was an email from Harold on October twenty-second for everybody to review this, and then we discussed it, and after it was reviewed and discussed, we would send it to the solicitor.
Or, or we would do what we should do, nothing, and think about our other ordinances first, start enforcing the ordinances we have in place. You know, I'll defer to my colleagues to discuss this under, numero, numero eight at the time. This thing is shocking, Harold. Shocking.
So.
And I think it should be immediately on the website.
You, you responded with what comments to make it better?
Which, no, I don't think we need this today at all. When you say make it better, this, this ordinance, folks, put this on the website. This essentially turns this township into a homeowners association. Think about it. Read this. You folks haven't read this.
No.
This puts the police and the zoning officer a thousand dollar fine. Now, we heard from our police, you were clear, unequivocal, when it turned about the burning ordinance, that usually we don't want to get involved with this. Did you see this, Chief?
Yeah.
Is this something you really want to do? You talk about wasting a budget. Is this something you guys really have time? Be honest.
Yes.
You, you think you want to do this?
Yeah, we have things to take care of because it deals with neighbor disputes.
There, there, there is.
A lot of complaints.
There is no way this is the right, this is the right move. No way, folks.
Now, I would certainly be up to any comments that you have would make it better.
First, we look at the ordinances that we're not enforcing. Example, a Jake Brick, a break retarder ordinance. In the history, how many times have we cited someone for that, even stopped them for a warning, Chief?
I have to research that. I don't know that.
I know that. I have a pretty good idea. They're all over that. Now, like your father was in the trucking business, was he not? No offense to break retards. But this is one of these ordinances, in my opinion, that's not needed, nine-one-seven twenty-four going into a largely residential district. But we don't enforce the ordinances we have. We don't keep those signs in order. We don't keep our soliciting signs in order. Our, our vulnerable population, our elderly people, they're the ones that have the problem. This, right, this, this is way overdone, Harold. I don't know what you were thinking. You seem to be the author of this. This is way overdone, and it's, it's. Did you read the, did, did my colleagues on the board read the penalty provisions? What do you think, Alan, of, of fining people a thousand dollars? The board of supervisors may direct a removal, so we can direct the removal of things on your property and send you to bill, and further involve our solicitor. Uh, did you?
Read this. Did you check and see how much of this is already in the ordinance?
And that's why we need to look at those ordinances and get rid of what's not working, get rid of what's overreaching. Our ordinance goes like this. And then one neighbor says, I don't like this, dog's barking, uh, more than some neighbor likes. Re, the unreasonable, unwarranted, who makes a, a decision that something's inconvenienced? Now, we had two main complaints last month. One of them has to do, if I'm using the term like Chinese lanterns.
Yeah.
Okay, they are already, there's already regulations on the books. If you set something on fire, whether it's a pyrotechnic, a, a fireworks, and it burns somebody else's property, somebody's going to be responsible for that. I do not think our police have, have the time to do that.
That doesn't take care of all attractions. It's literally on somebody's lawn as a result of that.
File a, a police report. Let them investigate. You can't do nothing without the ordinance. He can do whatever he wants to do. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's, there's tons of criminal sections that we can do what we want to do.
Did that say, did that say that you, you could go onto somebody's property and remove something?
Uh.
Without, without.
Basically, you, you should read it for yourself.
Without a warrant?
Let's put, let's put this on the internet. Let's put this on our website. Did, did the agenda get on the website today properly?
It did.
Okay, great. Let's put it on the website, folks. Just come back in a month and we'll talk more.
Uh, how about we give this host a chance to review it?
No, let's hear from the people first. You didn't want them to review it earlier. Don't let them do it now.
I wanted them to review it earlier. You said don't.
This is a, this is a disaster, folks. A disaster. That's my opinion. I hope that was clear.
Something like the Farrell Cat ordinance. Something like the feral cat ordinance.
You said you'd like one, and don't like it?
No, I said the feral cat ordinance.
Well, we complain about the, the money we spend with the police going out and, on calls and calls and calls, and we have an extremely large call volume. And this would eliminate some of that.
No, it wouldn't. This is going to perpetuate it, this is going to expand it. Is it going to make it worse?
It might do something specifically.
You know, I'm never in favor of, but act the ordinance is really nearly to might do something. That's how this township ended up like this.
We've had several complaints by people riding, four-wheelers, three-wheelers, two-cycle motorcycles, whatever, in the middle of the night, whatever, yang ding ding ding, yang ding ding ding, yang ding ding ding.
And do you remember what our other complaint was here, Jim?
The other complaint had to do with the, the bombing thing?
The town. Okay, and we're preempted from regulating that. Well, I believe we're preempted from regulating that. That's under, that's under a firearms, alcohol, and tobacco regulation. Under fireworks, and we have a fireworks ordinance.
Yes. We, we can, I think there are regulations we could do to that. In addition, we're not the only municipality in the state that has that problem, and there are a variety of different things that can be done.
Now, Chief, can you hear me?
Yes.
Now, with the explosion, would, would, if explosive devices, would, do you think the, I guess, letter P, the noise section, would that, would that cover it, do you think?
I'd have to review letter P and see what it says. But we can, we, we already have cited under disorderly conduct, okay, which is a law that we have on the books, and we lost that on appeal, but that goes on a case-by-case basis.
When the police show up at your house, people generally don't like that. Okay, and there are enough ordinances in these books, period.
I just want to ask a question. When we complained...
Please say your name, ma'am.
Yeah, Tracy Katarak, has two thirty-seven Far Road. When we complained about the dogs barking, that bark it all night long because she's never home, and I get up at four o'clock in the morning because they're still barking, nobody wanted to do anything about that noise, they told us we just had to deal with it.
No, this is an opportunity to fix that.
You're going to stop a dog bark, it's not an opportunity to fix it.
It's not one dog, it's five.
Boom, dog. Your problem's other than that, ma'am. You are trying to legislate lifestyle, you are trying to do others, and it's not going to work. This is not going to measurably help. It's going to bog us down with more areas, more solicitor time.
So we'll have a free-for-all then, that's my...
That's, that's exactly the direction this is heading, and we will have numerous complaints in here of people getting caught up in neighbors pissing matches. That's what's going to happen.
Did you ever live next to one of them neighbors? Maybe you ought to. I lived next to one that yells at me every time I'm outside on my property, so don't tell me it's not right.
If it, if it raises...
And we've been fighting this for four, five years.
If it raises to a, a level, here's the man.
Don't tell us it's a...
And they called us in court that they dropped it because of it, it wasn't going on long enough.
Well, and when it goes on long enough, you'll have another chance.
Five years ain't enough?
I don't know, I don't, it's, everything's case-specific, you know that.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we forward this to the solicitor for review.
As is, Harold.
Yes.
Here.
That's unbelievable.
Now, Harold, I have a question before we continue with that, I need some of this stuff. Now, did you get it all from some of our ordinances, or do you think from other places?
Most of it comes from our, our current ordinance.
What other places did it come from, Harold?
P S A.
Yeah, because some of the questions, like was our, I forget, was our, was our grass, was it six inches, eight inches, or whatever, what was that?
Six inches.
Six inches.
Well, Chris, it's funny you bring that up. We've been talking about grass on property we own. Our own township is in violation of these ordinances. We don't even maintain our own property. And when you talk about, when you talk about waste, we mow property that we don't have, we, we don't even own property. By the way, I, at some point, I'd like to get my plans back. I have them, you won't recognize them as mine, but I gave some that the township couldn't find. There's plans that I gave of property we now own. Chris, we're not even, we're in violation of our own ordinances. Some of the very people that complained here, when they see this, if enforcement's against them, you're going to hear a different tune.
Now, where'd you get the, the cat and everything else, Harold? Was that from ours, because about the running at large, that wasn't ours initially, was it?
I, I know, I have it sitting in front of me, Chris, so I can't answer that question.
Because, because this one would definitely get the feral cat thing going, because you even have the dogs and cats running at large, that more or less are zooming around, and of course, you're, you're going to see more cats than dogs doing that. So that would probably cause a lot of issues, I would believe.
If, if you want it out of there, just voice that opinion and...
I mean, I agree, it's, it's inappropriate, but it's going to be easier to control dogs than cats.
Think, think of this, how many wall shoots we got going right now for dog bites?
Two.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not saying about the dogs, I'm just saying the cats, because how many people's cats are all over the place?
How, yeah, right, but how many, how many complaints have we got about feral cats going on right now?
Uh, and we had like one or two, if there's still anything new.
There, there's two on one right now that they're feeding feral cats in the minutes, in the paperwork.
But when you have a barn that has twenty cats, what do you do with them then? You're going to go find them?
What do you do when a vicious dog is defined as a dog that's bitten one person? Put this out for all your dog owners.
I just can't believe that it's been over a month, and we're just now bringing any issues up.
We've absorbed all of this, we can't, we can't resolve this mess, and a month after all the years of, of, of hassle? Of potential hassle, you come out with this?
Jim, you're an attorney, you certainly could have provided adequate insights. It's one thing, there's five letters in the front of that thing.
If I'm an attorney, I can provide adequate, adequate insights in a number of things, according, according to family medical leadback, we'll get to that, we'll get to that.
But then it's not part of the nuisance ordinance.
Right, right.
It does say draft on that ordinance. A draft is just not, it's not an idea.
Is it possible, Mr. Brown, to, to, to just take a break from the ordinances and look at what we have? Is that possible? I asked months and months to look at the manager's ordinance. That's not a disrespect to our, our new manager. That needs revision, no one sent more people on it. Are you okay, are you, yeah, I only sent one suggestion, hiring, firing away from the manager.
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that? Mr. Rose, what's your thoughts?
And, put it committed to the...
Well, can we review the, the code for the manager's job responsibilities under the ordinance? Can we review that till, till Tuesday, or next month? You want me to do that? No, anybody, the board, I mean...
You're saying like, stop at this.
No, I didn't say you stop, I said we don't need it yet. We don't need it.
Over and over and over again. Okay, so I made a motion.
Yeah, I was going to say we have a motion, but I'll second it, because we should just, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't mean it's going to get approved, so I just count that as a draft, so I second it.
So we can have a discussion on the motion further. This is what I mean by the waste, folks. Why not put it on the website, why not let the people of Robinson know what's going on? Instead of under the cover of night, which is what this is. Rush, rush, rush.
How is it the cover of night when the attorney's going to review it, and it gets advertised before it's approved, for everybody to review it?
There have been so many ordinances.
And is that slip right through here, that you people never know, and then, when you, when you're caught up in it, I didn't know, I didn't know. Here's a chance, put it on, what, what's the horn and waiting?
It amazes me how this board can delay things for months and years, and then out, almost out of the blue, Harold, is the way I see this.
It doesn't mean it's not going to get voted on, until who knows how many months, it's not going to get voted on per se in December, if there's so many corrections we want to make, we make the corrections.
You talk about corrections, Mr. Smith, you talk about corrections, I talk about looking at, looking at the ordinance in total, not, not just, again, problem after problem. We think we can solve with this, and I'm telling you, we're going to create more than we solve. So it's not correct this, it, it, it's a different, let's look at our existing ordinance, let's correct other problems, let's realize that most times, you're going to find out, that's right, Mr. Steve, I am a lawyer. Most times, there are already laws that apply, state, county, there are laws that apply, all in our tone to do this. And we need to show restraint. That's my opinion.
Okay, Jim, what law applies to somebody, a neighbor, riding a noisy, noisy two-cycle machine around the property?
Disorderly conduct, disorderly conduct.
It's called Maple Grove.
Disorderly conduct.
Nighttime disorderly conduct, during the day, nothing. And if you ever have it, it's a nightmare.
Now, there's a, there's a case in point, you know, so I, I think this should be tabled till we talk about it next month.
We did that last month.
No, we didn't, you just introduced it last month, Harold. I munch on things a while, I think about things, I, I, I give it due time. There, there's no need to this.
Give a little bit of a second.
Well, I don't see any problem with letting our solicitor put his input into it. I don't have any problem with you putting your input into it, or anybody else for that matter. That's, that's the reason we're here, is to listen to everything. Dennis apparently has input on this also, because you've hit apparently different cases where you weren't able to do anything with the laws that we do have, or that are in existence.
You're going to find out, Alan, someday, that different judges make different rulings, there's an appellate process, there's a whole, a whole thing that can happen here, that isn't, that hasn't.
Don't doubt that in a little bit, I believe everything you're telling me on that.
Cost money for our solicitor to review it?
I know you told me that some of these things were in various ordinances that we already have, and you just pulled them out and added, added to this.
Well, some of them were, like, weren't even added, they were just, they were there. So which ordinances will we be deleting, Mr. Steve? Which ordinances will be deleting as a result of this now? This seven-page, thousand-dollar fine. Criminal, a summary offense, folks, for your vicious dog that bit one person. Will come on your property, we'll make changes, we'll have our solicitor sit on you then. Read it. I'm making it up. Oh, don't worry, we, we, the government, won't do that to you. Oh, don't worry. If you won't do it, you don't need it, don't put it in.
Ready to move forward, Mr. Brown? All right, we have a duly made and seconded motion on the board to send this to the solicitor, I believe, Mr. Steve. Steve, and for his comments, and maybe he'll have more of the same thing you have. I don't know, I don't know what Jane looks at, but I see no problem whatsoever with getting Jane's opinion. Well, maybe it'll parallel yours, maybe it'll be something totally different. But I think we should do that, and Dennis, I don't know, if you've looked at this in depth or not?
I looked at the sections where like Harold said, a lot of the, a lot of the section that deals with something that we would be enforcing, and we already have on the books, it's just a lot of the... That was my interpretation of it.
So if the problem hasn't solved, it's already on the books, how do you think this is going to be different? It's not.
I said, I said, nice hug.
Well, the thing there is, specifically, I think I'll look for you, and this is things that maybe aren't on the books, or aren't addressed, that are specific problems. He said about the Tannerite, and that's alcohol, fire, or tobacco, and I believe that's probably the case.
The biggest complaints that aren't addressed with what we have on the books would be the dirt bike riding during the day, of course, the Tannerite, things like that. Some states have state law for the Tannerite, that's the main, is not one of them, okay? As far as the dogs goes, a lot of times, we cite our dog law, even though we currently already have an ordinance for the dog violations, okay, but we refer to dog laws, which is three oh five. And the reason we do that is because the first offense is a summary, and then the second offense under dog law is a misdemeanor, and it goes up, so we typically, not always, but typically, we will cite our dog law when we have dog violations.
So you have something to work on there, or, so I mean, that doesn't belong in the ordinance, that portion of it, and I'm fine with that, and that's, that's what we should be working toward in my mind. Okay. Harold, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff?
I'm going to vote no. Reasons for, I think it needs further review, and if there's things we can pull out of it that we already have, I think we should do that.
Tim? No.
Chris?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, just to give it to the, I want to hear the solicitor's opinion on all this, but I have absolutely no problems whatsoever with going over this ourselves and pulling other things out, adding things, deleting things, changing things, whatever may come up. Like I said, the, the five big letters across the front, and two-inch-high print says draft, and it's there for a reason. It's a work in progress.
But couldn't we do that prior to giving it to our solicitor, so we're not spending more money? Like, we could do that as a board.
We can do that, I don't have an issue with that, if we, if you can, everybody sits down and does it.
It sounds like this motion has passed. Let's, let's move forward.
Yeah, move forward, but definitely if you got things you want to put in there, something you don't like, red line.
I don't like, I, we don't need it, I don't like it, you know, you're not understanding, it's not a fix. You're not understanding, it's, it's not a rewrite. Just because it says draft, things end up going from draft, some things go in, some things come out. Put it on the website, folks. Get it out to the people, we need to see. When they fully understand it, we'll see.
How many times have we had complaints, people coming in here with...
And you can't be hesitant, you know, to tell them, there's already a remedy under the law for your complaint, you can't be hesitant to tell someone that. You, you set a firework off, and it burns the guy's house down, do you guess what?
Firework?
That's criminal, that's, that's the pyrotechnic one.
What remedy did you offer Leslie Curran when she had thousands of dollars' worth of ventos?
Now, are you talking about as a result of the Chinese lantern, or, or the pyrotechnic?
Pyrotechnic.
Okay. What do I, what would I recommend, as a, as a farmer myself? I would, I would bet that we know who is doing that, or she does. Imagine we'd have some ideas. So if someone causes harm, they need to prove their case, and, and then they can sue that person. If that's creating, if that's at night, where's our police? No offense, gents, where's our police then if that's at night? It's already on the books. Now, now, Harold, when, when dogs come on my property, okay, we have a dog running at large, okay, and they kill my animals, what happens? I shot, yes, we did. And then your, your sergeant comes back on my property when the guy comes back after my father with a gun, and then I sue him, and they pay me. That's it. Now, let's show this, since, since you bring up Leslie Curran, let's show her this ordinance and see if her property's in compliance. Let's show her. Can you call her, can we call her and come back next month and ask if this is what she wants?
Well, we can certainly try and get a hold of her.
All right.
But you got to remember, not all of us are lawyers. We all have the ability to turn around and...
You asked what the remedy is, there, there are, this, the answer is not always at this table, folks. Somebody once said...
Well, the answer is that they're perfectly respectful, maybe.
You cannot legislate lifestyle, Mr. Steve, you cannot legislate common sense.
Nope, I agree.
Okay, so this ordinance is not going to do it.
You can't fix stupid either.
I didn't get to that one. No offense to whoever informed of Chinese lanterns, they have been a problem. Across the nation, they have been a problem, particularly in Aaron Climes.
Yes.
Okay, so there are solutions. You know, you know, what happens when a horse gets, when there's a rifle shot? This can be construed, this is a, a potential Second Amendment problem? I don't believe this is constitutional, personally. I'll, I'll be anxious to see what our solicitor says.
Well, there's a part, that's not a constitutional...
Because somebody else did it, doesn't mean we should do it, folks.
I don't have any problem with that.
Think we lost this motion, Jeff?
All right.
Sometimes you lose them.
I think we're on number ten, public works. And I guess we talked about the intermunicipal candy program, or is there something else?
No, that's it.
We covered that.
Okay, we told you about public works, you know, hold on a second.
Yeah.
If you folks see the agenda, there's three items... If you folks see the agenda, there's three items, as may arise, as may arise. Now, our manager has been on the job how long?
Little over three weeks, that's right.
Little over three weeks. So he needs a little bit of breathing room. But what I'm gonna hope to do is, going forward, let's get as many items on the agenda as we can. And if we don't get to it, if we choose not to discuss them, that's okay, but there are some inherent problems when items are not appearing on the agenda, whether inadvertently or inadvertently. I tend to think most times it's inadvertently, but we need this agenda expanded. For instance, under Public Works, we have goofed around with, and as it relates to the budget and waste, the property down at the end of Boomtown Road. We've goofed around, goofed around, goofed around for years. Now, we own the property. Chris, you're on the Environmental Advisory Council, correct?
Uh, no, I'm only the supervisor liaison.
Well, you were not supposed to be voting, and you did. One of the requirements of that Environmental Advisory Council is taking a survey of those properties. We haven't done what we need to do, ala we don't need more ordinances. Now, what are we doing? I'm about to order my sweet corn seeds. I don't wanna make this personal, but I farm fifty acres next to public property. These seeds cost me thousands of dollars. We've goofed around, goofed around, and goofed around. All that mess we're supposed to do is make a decision. Put it up for bid. Don't put it up for bid. I won't participate in that, and we don't do it.
Tim, the agenda's set out for everybody to go back...
Absolutely, and can, and now, going for, absolutely, I can. And I will. I'll have to. We know what we talked about. It's, we know what we talked about the month before, but there is so much happening during the month that we don't even know about. At least I don't.
Every time that's appeared on, as a line item, it's been capsized.
Guess, guess, my point exactly. Now, 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 you talk about waste, folks. Driving down Boomtown Road, our lawnmower guy is cutting an eight-foot or ten-foot strip to nowhere. We drive our equipment down there. There's no way to access the Scoop River from that place. It's only mow over my fence. And then I call the police, do I not? And then what happens? Sometimes they catch the guy, sometimes they don't, sometimes they cite the guy. There's already ordinances, but you can't let, why would we mow that property? We beat up our equipment. We mowed the same field. How many times with that boom mower thing? You did it, didn't you? Once or twice? I know I saw you do it there, Harold. For what?
Tim, if I remember right, you weren't mowing at the beginning of the year so we could put it out for bids.
No, I want it maintained. It shouldn't have been put out for bids if that's what we're gonna do, but back up, folks, back up as to what is inherently the problem with this? When I spoke to our previous Public Works directors, we wanted to give it away. And you two voted against that. You were not here, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, you're right.
Right, so we wanted to give it away. That shows you what happened.
We didn't wanna give it away.
Absolutely. The board wanted to. Who brings that motion up? Before Mr. Love's death, I spoke to him about it. It's incredible. Absolutely incredible. But there it sits, taken out of, taken out of production, incurring expenses, beating up equipment. For what?
Doesn't matter. What I'm gonna say is, let's put it on the agenda for Tuesday night. That we're gonna put the thing up for bid for spring or whenever.
Now, when you have the conditions and you know what you're putting up for bid, insurance requirements, exclusivity, those kind of things, it takes more, in my opinion, than just put it out for bid. There's a whole thing, a whole thought process there.
Yeah, the USDA has a formula.
Not just the price, Harold. What you do with the property, what you spray on the property.
They offer all that. They have, they include all that.
Well, why doesn't this board move that forward? Why don't they, why don't they, I'm not, I'm not doing that. I'm an interested purchaser. I wanna farm, I wanna farm my farm.
All right, to move ahead, Harold, can you get a copy of that? Or do you have a copy of it?
I'm just going along.
Well, I would suggest that the board, okay, that you and our solicitor work together with that, that it's done, that it can go out.
Well, before you do that, you should, you need to get a motion on the table, but that's a directed, I wanna go.
Well, that's, yes, I agree with you a hundred percent. That's where I'm heading. That's what I'm looking for, a motion to do that. Do I hear that motion? Okay, I'll make that motion.
What's your motion, Neil?
I'll make the motion that you and the solicitor get together to prepare items that should be included in a big package to rent or to lease, I guess is a better word perhaps, the land at the end of Boomtown Road, the township homes, to put it up for uses for, for the... Tim, does that sound descriptive?
I'm gonna be, for me, I'm gonna abstain from that, though. I own the property.
Well, I understand that, I'm just asking you...
It sounds like a good start to me, but I could defer to our solicitor.
So may I make a recommendation?
Absolutely.
We'll also take a look at other potential uses of the property that's there. One of the things that, we have a substation there, as I understand it, at the end of Boomtown Road.
Well, the substation's not ours.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that there's the ability to potentially hook in solar to that, and that could generate some income to the township over a long-term contract. We were working on that up at Oakmount Scott Reservation over the last few years as part of my membership of the board there. That has not come to fruition, but it's something I think we ought to discuss, are there other potential land usages there other than just farming, if that's what the board...
That was already discussed. That was already brought up for last year. Hiking trails, wildflowers, more police patrols. It's already been discussed.
What's it actually cost to mow that field? Compared to what it's gonna cost just to get a thing together, to put it out for bid?
You're in there for a full day mowing, if not two.
Just one man, one tractor?
Yep. You only have to do it twice a year, according to your ordinance.
Do we wanna just limit this to just for farming, or do we wanna consider...
I would expand my motion for farming or solar, solar farm or...
It could be other uses as well.
Yeah. If you find other use, somebody else wants to use it for something else, that's fine, as long as it's not something like, obvious, nobody wants to see a landfill.
You're gonna find out that that property is floodplain property.
Absolutely.
And you're gonna find out, we have ordinances on that, we have ordinances on everything.
Yep.
You're gonna find out that, that can be problematic, but you find out what you need to do.
All right, I'll second Neil's voting.
Okay. I have a duly-made and seconded motion to prepare documents and things that we could ready the land for decent rent, for use, for a whole bunch of different things. My roll call vote, Harold, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff, what's your?
Yes.
Jeff?
I'm abstaining on that.
I figured you would. I vote yes. Chris?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. You got, however, yes is an extension.
And, Tim, your abstain is because you have a conflict of the... I have interest, personal interest in that property, especially when it's owned by my family, prior to the Browns.
Okay, we're right here. Park and rec, park and rec, I believe, yes.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
It's sad for me to comment on the fact that our lab facilities, our job johnnies, are now truly being used as drug injection sites. I saw one of your officers go in there today. I'm not suggesting he was injecting drugs. I'm accepting that is heavily used, and it's not that I make a habit of surveying job johnnies, but I do, as you're aware, look in the dumpster. We haven't talked about the recycling program. As you're aware, I see who's dumping what where. That's a cost. And that's, one of the problems is, and when I say we don't keep up with our own ordinance, do you think it's rational to have a park open till 10:00 P.M.? Now, my sign, the signs that I say out there seem like they're open. I hope I'm wrong. Is that, is that, am I right or wrong?
I'm not sure. This was something else related to parks right here.
So I think, I think before, before we then have the same people using it, let's, let's, let's hold off on that. We're supposed to be getting advice and recommendations from committees, not having them make decisions, and that's what's happened in the past. So let's open this up to Plowville and other places. Make sure township residents are not being charged, you know, as best we can. And let's, let's put Robinson, let's put Robinson first. I'm not saying we don't. Let's open it up again. You talk about waste. If you people sold that park to show it a year ago and looked at the money we put in there, the one email I received from you, Richard, had to do with the timely winterizing of it. That's the only email I received, and thankfully, we didn't, but I guess tomorrow we're supposed to freeze this, not gentlemen? Tomorrow, Saturday. Twenty-three degrees. So let's talk, let's think about the park, and let's think about whether if we're still open till 10:00.
If you remember, though, years ago, people played basketball there till 10:00 o'clock, but I mean, that's...
Nobody plays basketball, and if you talk about a disruption in the neighborhood, hearing that ball bouncing at 10:00 at night, I'll show you a disruption. I'll show you a noise ordinance.
You don't care about the dogs next to me. Why would I care about the basketball?
Absolutely. I care about the dogs. I care about your dogs, Phil. That dog ever bite anybody on your neighborhood?
They never allowed out.
Say it again.
They're locked out loud, and they were in this cage twenty-four-seven with nobody there, and they just barked constantly. They won't do anything. We go on through everything.
Okay. So before we commit to anybody, let's send them a short letter, manager can do that, let's send them a short letter saying we wanna evaluate the 2024 uses, the summer.
Oh, you mean for the park?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
For all the parks.
It's gonna be a little difficult too, because you don't know who some, I think I heard, people walking in the door are. But we've already made the motion and proved that we would not charge any township organization a fee.
Right, now, if they can get on to use it, that's, that might work.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we've heard any complaints, you know, I don't have a list here, but I don't think we've had any complaints including at all. I heard two things here. Are you saying we should be closing the playground earlier now that daylight saving time?
No, we should not let it open till 10:00. We should look at the rules and regulations on the park. We should have extra police protection instead of going out for vicious dogs. There's already vicious dogs. We should have police, more police protection there at the playground.
Okay, well, do you wanna, what about the people that like to go and go out to play rough?
Well, they don't belong on there.
No.
There's a no-dog ordinance. The other day, I saw a kid step in it. Okay, now, I happen to get by there all the time. People are blatantly, blatantly ignoring that. Now, if the police don't enforce that when it's posted on there, how are they gonna enforce this? I'm not complaining. I'm stating what I see. There's a dog park walk the line, walk the ready, and actually, you can walk as far as you want. Can't we have one place without dogs? I didn't make the rules. I'm just saying there they are. There's already a dog ordinance.
Question still is, do you have a time? Do you think the playground should be closed? That's something the board can operate on.
Let's get our recommendation from our Parks and Rec Department, see what they say.
I know in a lot of other places, it's dusk to dawn, no reward unless...
Absence scheduled events, and we do have waste that have been left going into repair.
Yeah, it's just...
Just repair.
I like the throw-out, you know? Yeah, the rhythm of basketball court. As a matter of fact.
Show you a picture, fellows, maybe next morning. Show you a picture, firefighters, of a sign that says, "No parking on roads." There is no way an emergency vehicle could get down that road. No way. When I can't make it down with a duly pickup truck, no way those trucks are gonna make it down there, because I feel that, and if you look at the application, I don't know if you got a chance to do that. You see the application to rent, there's a little application, it's like a form to rent that. If you haven't, take a look at that. That might be something we wanna beef up. No parking on the outfield. Look at the ruts in there now. Look, they abused the equipment techs from those ruts for nothing. And this is something, Harold, I said a year ago. I'm just confused.
I said, I'm just confused. You don't care whether his dog comes over and bites me. We care about a riding...
I care that his dog comes over and bites you, and there's a remedy for that. There's a remedy for, and there's an ordinance against dog, or dogs on the park, and we do nothing. So you're confused, Harold. You don't understand.
I'm not confused.
Absolutely.
I, I think I got it.
As long as it happens around his office, it can't be done. If it happens at mine, it gotta be changed.
No dog, no dog, no dog ordinance as proposed in this. Are you familiar with all the dog ordinances? You're frustrated because you didn't get a result, I think, from this, Phil. I don't know all the facts of that.
Oh, I called everybody. No one wants to do that.
Okay, then maybe you have a loser case. Did that thought occur to you? Maybe you hear dogs barking, that might be a loser case you have.
In my head, I should go see a psychiatrist at...
I don't know. Maybe some cases...
I hear them every night.
Some cases are winners and some are losers. I don't know.
Hey, Tim, you're asking that park rules be reviewed?
Absolutely. This had a recommendation from them.
And you notify the group to use the park for 2024 usage.
Yes, that we're going to evaluate that, that that's enough guaranteeing them. They just assume they're gonna use it.
Well, I said, we find out what...
They need to re-apply. They need to re-apply.
So who's gonna do that?
Our manager. He's capable. I'm hearing good things.
We're putting him in charge of park, are we, Tim?
No, he's gonna facilitate that, those letters going out. He's gonna make sure he knows what's going on. He can do it.
I guess we're done with park and rec then, unless there's something else.
There is something we need to discuss here, I think, water issue.
Yes.
All right, so just so everyone's aware, last week and early this week, M.J. Ryder, who does our water testing, came out, tested the water. Most of this has been a lot of phone calls back and forth at this point. Came out, tested the water. The water came back with a positive result. They are required to do a retest. They did that retest. It also came out with a positive result. At that point, that was sent to the Department of Environmental Protection. They then in turn contacted me, let us know that there was, in fact, a positive test result, as we already knew. And then came out for a visit. Chief and I actually went out with the DEP, essentially reviewer, who came out, Brody, took a look at our wellhead out here, and one of the things that we discovered at the wellhead, it is a dual casing. There is a gasket between the inner and outer casings that appears to be dry-rodded. So the process from here will be, we've already reached out to Cole Brothers out in Lebanon, PA, out in, actually, out in Myers Town. They will come out, they are both, he's an operator, so we have that an operator. The operator fills in the paperwork, and then they also will make recommendations on remediation. So we are not sure why the source is there. Again, this is part of the job of Cole Brothers to come out as they look at his operator, and fill out the paperwork, and then the remediation recommendations. We have until early December to make that happen, and then that point, we'll send the paperwork back to DEP and continue through the process.
That's the well at this property?
Correct, sir. That is the well at this property, so it is between the road back to the, correct.
Right, is there a problem at the playground animals, though?
No, that, that is clear.
Yeah, I wasn't sure when you said that. I just was confused.
And the sewer plant's fine.
And, correct, and the sewer plant's fine as well.
Sewer plant's fine.
Sewer plants had a problem also?
No, 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 they're fine.
They're fine. So it was just the one here, and it's for E. coli. So there is a boil water advisory on all the things that are here.
So don't drink the water.
And Chief was very quick, got all the, got all the water points here in the building posted with boil water advisory, and knows not to be issued without purpose.
I have an idea when it was checked, when it was checked before.
It's checked, I think, every month?
I believe it is monthly, but I need to read the recommendations.
Some of them are tested every month, some of them are more sporadic, but I think it's checked every month. It used to be, you guys need a reading like that, it was flooding the well with chlorox, like it sits on a long, long, often. And that very well might be the...
That may be the end result of remediation. So I think the first thing we need to take a look at the gasket out here, more than likely, if that's dry-rotted, there could be, some animal gets into that and causes an issue. As you know, it's one of the... Correct, could be a lot of different things. So we just make sure we're doing the right things, and everybody's been helped through the process, and I expect that they, I hope that they would be out here today. I know his schedule's busy, so I will contact him first thing tomorrow morning, even though we're in the office... So I will contact him first thing tomorrow morning, even though we're, we've been office closed, I am gonna be stopping in, I'm gonna make a call to him and see what we can do.
I know with the fire company, we went up and stole a black light.
We have a black light. The U V.
You tell a U V light, yes.
Pictures on some of the other.
We, we have a U V light up at the, uh, playground, and we have one that's the, uh. Sure.
There was, I need to check the, the system with our plumber, I believe there was one here at one point, however, that's not easily identifiable to us as layman. So I'm gonna make a call to him as well.
He's not would have taken care of the problem, should have.
Should have, correct, sir.
Okay, anything else on parking rec, are we? Did you go?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good business, we had nuisance ordinance under that, and we've already covered that, are there any other items under new business? Anybody? One less, got one twice, old business.
Richard, could you make sure, I'm not sure when the sign was updated last, the sign is hanging open. And it just says.
Be a west and a date.
When, when was that changed?
I, I don't know it's changed, but that thing's been unlocked for months.
It no longer locks.
Right, that's what I thought.
Okay, can it be, can it be the letters we put in announcing what meetings, can you make sure that that?
We don't have, we'd have to get letters again, the letters that were bought last year, they cooked in the sun, even if they were out there for a week.
I saw they were all weaved up.
Yeah.
So up until two months ago, we still had the letters, and we were still letting people know there was a meeting?
Yeah.
So now the letters are banned?
Yeah, I could, you could, maybe we'll stop.
Down there.
Yeah, you can stop and see them one day.
What happened to the latch?
At some point, we might wanna invest in a roof sign.
Yes.
Quite possible.
And we had, I, actually, I was working with Rich Orwick at the time, we had quotes on digital signs. And it was for, the, the electric's already there, it was like thirty-five hundred bucks for the same type of sign, same size.
Just digital?
Just digital, yeah.
And that can be remotely programmed?
Yeah, it can be remotely programmed.
Does that sound so cheap?
Maybe we could find that paperwork.
I will, because I still have an email from it, it was a while ago, but I'll dig it up and forward it.
Maybe you wanna, if you have a person you got the date from, maybe you wanna contact and you'll see if the quote's still good, or if there's a, needs to be read adjusted. And I would think that, uh, if the board's agreeable, it'd be something we could consider, a cup coming in, that's what.
Yeah, it was thirty-five hundred's cheap, right, for a sign. Let's make sure we know what we're getting.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I just, that's just.
I'll put our tips for you.
Okay, sounds good to me. All right. Problem, anybody else wanna say anything else?
Let's get into executive session then, I think.
Do the order.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
That's great.
Go into executive session, all right. Folks, I wouldn't anticipate making any motions coming back from the executive session. Looks like, but we are gonna discuss some personnel matters, we have some issues, and we are definitely gonna discuss some legal matters. I think somebody's trying to claim part of the township land, we're gonna ask some legal questions on our social. On real estate matters. I have a break.
All right.
Hey, you coming along, Chris?
If you're hanging out, do you remember that the camera light was still on?
Yes. I did, sir, I did that. Okay, well, I know I'm gonna go over the, uh, problems tomorrow. Whether it's today, sir, or Monday, you know? Okay, let's go on, all representatives.
Well, that's also, we have not received. I'll can, I almost throw. But at any rate, you made a rather numerous, uh, pre preliminary land submission, and one got. So if you see anything, let me know, there will be additional. But yes, if like, you know, anything you see like that, there's a concern from, feel free to write an email, uh, it doesn't have to be, uh, you know, matter of fact, I'll, I'll do it anyway.
Okay, so, well, you have to focus, obviously, for security reasons, but then again, you know, for the neighbors that are there and that near.
Who they are, they, they are maintaining a rather generous buffer, however, if you look, there's one lot that is intended to access.
I saw that, yeah.
I don't think that will remain the case, because I don't think Karm is gonna let him do that.
Yeah.
But I believe his intention is to involve that lot in himself, you know, essentially, like, you know, put, put the street in and. Um, I don't think that, that a lot involves a separate term. Because I, Karm is not gonna stand.
Here's a way to already go in there.
Used, used to access all the.
All right, yeah, I'll take a look at her.
What's up?
Time to go.
Yeah. Four hours, six, four, five hours? Well, I'm going home, I'm not staying here. I would do one, let me not even get up more.
Did that hurt? Did that hurt, did you know?
You're supposed to use that cloth.
I don't have it.
Well, you should, go ahead. Yeah, I thought you were about all that.
Who had it?
You should have cleaned up in the morning before you get home. Look, I'm spreading them. Is it just water or?
Yeah, green. It greened it, you know.
Oh, that's right, it did. You stick one of those cloths in your, cloths in your, um, lunchbox so that you have it when you get a minute. My throat squatted this fast.
When do you eat like spicy?
When they were going through that rezoning thing, she was here all day. I don't think you were here. If those dogs aren't quieted, I know.
That's their burden.
I'm saying, why don't they call like that?
It's because you.
You know, report it somewhere. Because it's true what he says, it's not our job to take care of their disputes.
Got to use this side, got to use this side, got to use this field up here.
What's in there?
Back office. Going from hallway, from the front office to the back, then or from there there. I used to be tennis in the office. Please? Gosh, damn.
That does give, that ordinance does give police too much authority, too much authority. I'm sorry.
You're twenty-three-two, first check your CT, pretty much five, three, one, one, two. I'm sorry.
Hey, Mark. Did you flush the poop, yeah, did you flush the poop for that? Did you flush the poop for that? Oh, now I did a fatal mistake.
Oh, wow.
I forgot to write down what time it is now.
Now, this is something exciting. It's the Water and Wastewater Systems Looping. Thank you, Rick.
Did you write down what time we went out?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. I did. Eight forty-six.
Okay, and time now is twenty-one, twenty-two, alright? And the board is reconvening. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
No.
Nope, nothing.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn. I'll motion to adjourn, but I have a second.
I'll second motion.
Let's stay in talking order.
Oh shit.
You can do that better.
Are you everyone?
No, I did not manage it, Dean.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Chris. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Ron.
Yep. I really wanted to.